County Commission Staff Meeting, March 12th, 2024. Start with the introduction of the dais. I'm sorry, Teresa Gilia.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board. Stephanie Summer, Dumas, Commissioner.
Good afternoon, County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Charlie Anis, Prosecutor's Office.
I'm Hamilton County Commission President Alicia Reese. We have one item on the agenda, the interim financing facilities for MSD. And who's Mr. Aludo, I'll turn it over to you.
Bethany Pugh on Team Zoom, whatever we're calling it nowadays. John and I were just talking before, and just as we get her teed up here, just very, very briefly, for those who may be watching at home, Bethany is going to walk us through some financing options for the Metropolitan Sewer District. As we continue to go down the path, especially as we get deeper and deeper into the consent decree, and we are doing projects that amount to, if not 10, sometimes hundreds of millions of dollars, MSD needs to have funds available to encumber in order to enter into contracts. And it used to be, we had a surplus fund that was hefty enough to absorb that and enable those encumbrances to happen, but as that surplus fund has whittled away, we're now looking for the cheapest and most efficient option to enable us to enter into contracts, enter into loan agreements with the state, et cetera, in a way that doesn't necessitate issuing bonds necessarily or raising rates to replenish that fund. So Bethany is going to walk us through some efforts that she and Assistant Administrator Brugan have led over the past several months to identify some of these interim financing facilities for us so that MSD can do their work and we do it in the way that's most efficient as possible for the ratepayer. So Leslie is...
She's on.
Is she on now? Okay, all right, great. There she is.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Hello, good afternoon.
Good to be with you virtually. I am not sure, should I be sharing my screen with the presentation, or how will that work?
Sorry, yes, Bethany, if you could share your screen, that would be great.
Can you all see that? Is it legible, large enough?
Can you make it a little, can you make it full screen?
Yeah, is that, is that?
Yes, that's better.
Okay. So Jeff actually did a really great introductory summary, just to give you background. So as we've been working on the long-term financial plan and doing the modeling with respect to potential consent decree considerations, given the magnitude and the size of certain projects, it has become evident that in addition to the surplus fund balance, which heretofore has been sufficient to not only provide capital for funding, but also to provide unencumbered dollars sufficient enough to meet gap funding, so funding needed for projects in advance of OWDA loan or permanent funding options, or to serve as encumbrance, encumbrance available dollars in order to provide MSD to enter into contracts for larger projects. That will no longer be the case. We don't anticipate that being the case any longer once we get into the meat of the consent decree, given the size and magnitude of certain projects. And so we need to identify additional facilities that will efficiently allow MSD to enter into contracts, to encumber funds, or to provide ready cash gap financing in advance of things like, for example, tax credit dollars via IRA with respect to eligible projects that are under consideration in the context of MSD CIP. So with that in mind, last year, working with John largely and MSD, and last year, working with John largely and MSD, PFM, and Bond Counsel, we went through a request for proposals process, and we sent that request for proposals for ideas. So those could have been bank products, those could have been public market bond offering products, so on and so forth. We really tried to have a very broad or cast a wide net in terms of the types of facilities that could meet the county's needs. And that proposal was sent to all of the 16 firms that are a part of the county's underwriting pool. You might recall, a couple of years ago, actually, I guess two and a half years ago now, we walked you through the RFP process to develop an underwriting pool for the county that would be available, and firms from whom could be selected from the pool to serve on the underwriting syndicate for any of the county's issuances, be they GO, and in this case sewer revenue bonds. Of the 16 firms through the proposal went to, we got 14 proposals from 10 firms. The county and MSD debt team, along with PFM and Densmore, reviewed those and determined that there were two proposals and two actually very distinct products that were going to be best, excuse me, most appropriate in terms of the specific details of how products and how they worked, also in the context of cost to meet the county's needs. And those two proposals were presented by Bank of America and Piper Sandler. Let me pause there for any questions on this page. Okay.
I'll open it up, hold on, any questions?
Oh, okay.
No questions, please continue.
So just going to give you a little bit of hopefully high-level detail on each product. So the Bank of America product is a line of credit. And so what this product will do is provide actual ready cash. So you'll have access to a line of credit from which you can draw funds up to $100 million. The term of this facility is five years. The cost of the facility, so the cost of Bank of America committing these dollars to be available to the county at any time is 45 basis points. So that's 45% of 1%. If you were to draw on that line of credit, then the cost of any draw would be the interest rate, which is SOFR, we call it daily SOFR, plus 1% or 100 basis points. It's important to note that this facility and the facility that I'll talk about next, which is Piper's facility, is subordinate in terms of the lien to the revenue bonds, the sewer revenue bonds that are currently outstanding. So, for example, Bank of America and Piper do not have the same priority pledge of net revenues of the sewer system as do the bondholders. So the, you know, individual investors or institutional investors who have purchased the sewer revenue bonds that the county has issued in the past. So this facility is really designed to ensure that, should the county actually need access to dollars to facilitate the MSD capital plan in any way, so ready cash at this facility would be in place to be able to do that. And when we thought through the value of this credit facility, it was largely in the context, but not exclusively, in the context of some of the IRA, and specifically the investment tax credit, whereby you essentially have to build a project, right? So you've got to upfront the cost of construction for a project and then receive a credit, which is significant in terms of percentage amount for that effort. And so you need gap funding, if you will, for that type of project. But again, this would be available for any capital funding need to provide sort of upfront or gap funding in advance of an OWDA application being cleared, for example, or anything of that nature. The next facility is from Piper Sandler, and this facility is largely envisioned to serve the encumbrance needs of the district. So in this case, as Jeff noted, in order to enter into contracts, you have to, by Ohio law, be able to demonstrate you have dollars in the process of collection. And so this product that's presented by Piper is essentially a commitment from them to issue notes as and if needed. And again, we don't anticipate this being a need because we anticipate using this product largely just to have the ability to encumber funds. But as and if needed, they would issue note obligations up to $250 million to facilitate funding. This facility is $250 million, it will also have a five-year term. So we're really trying to, as much as possible, structure these facilities to work in tandem in terms of term. The commitment for, or their fee for committing to purchase bonds in the future as and if needed is 12 and a half basis points. Should notes actually be issued, we would negotiate at the time of sale what the interest rate would be, and Piper would receive a fee for serving as the underwriter for that note issuance. And that's, that's all there is. I'm happy to take any questions or provide any clarifications, that would be helpful.
Thank you very much for that. Before we go into the questions though, Jeff, can you bring people watching kind of up to speed? The consent decree was a little while back, and...
Yeah, so just to put a little more context onto the presentation here. So as folks who are watching probably are aware, there is an entity in the county called the Metropolitan Sewer District that is essentially the sewer district for the county. The sewer district has, and I'm giving on rough orders of magnitude here, an operating budget on an annual basis of somewhere just north of 200 million, 200, between 200 and 250 million dollars, a capital budget that can be around that same amount. So from a, from an organizational perspective, this is one of the larger political subdivisions in southwestern Ohio or in this region. And they have, on an annual basis, capital projects that they have to do to repair and maintain the, both the collection system, which are the pipes that bring sewage out of someone's house, and the treatment system, which are the treatment plants where this wastewater travels to to get treated so it can be discharged properly into the different waterways in the community. We are currently undergoing what is known as a consent decree, which is where we are under regulatory requirements by the federal government to dramatically upgrade our sewer infrastructure because our sewer infrastructure was built, in some cases, over 100 years ago. And we have a lot of pipes that were built to carry both sanitary sewers, this is the sewage that comes out of toilets and sinks, et cetera, but also carries rainwater. And it was actually designed to work that way back when it was built. But the problem, now that we have an urbanized society and we've improved and expanded our facilities and our communities, is when we have a lot of rainwater that gets into those pipes, it causes overflows. So you have sanitary sewer, sewage overflowing into waterways of the county. We were, the county was actually the subject of a lawsuit over almost two decades or so ago now that resulted in a federal finding that we had to fix these deficiencies in our sewer system. And this is expected to be a fix that will not cost millions, it will not cost hundreds of millions, it will cost billions of dollars to do. So by the time the consent decree is done, we will have invested in real today dollars, probably north of $6 billion into this, into this fix, which all told will be one of the biggest capital improvement projects, if not the biggest capital improvement project undertaken in this, in this, in this region. So as the sewer district is doing these projects, it has the need to issue contracts to do individual, individual projects. And as such, according to Ohio law, they need to have funds available to encumber or enter into those contracts against. You can't just enter a contract if you don't have the funds available to actually pay for. So as opposed to issuing long-term bonds or raising rates to raise a big pile of cash, the thought was that we essentially have some banking instruments that we could potentially draw on cheaply and efficiently so that we could have the cash available that would satisfy the legal requirements, but at the same time not cost the ratepayers too much. And as a means of making sure we can get the projects done at the cheapest possible cost. So Commissioner, I hope that's...
Yeah, no, that's good, I just wanted, you know, because it happened two decades ago. And, and wanted to also indicate, while there is a consent decree mandate, it is unfunded. We have to figure that part out. That's why I just wanted people to know that. I will open it up, Vice President Treehouse.
Thank you, thanks Bethany for the presentation. So is the idea here to have the funds available, as you say, as the rates, the ratepayer fees are coming in to pay for these projects, and they come in gradually, right? And the projects happen gradually, they're not all going to happen at the same time. So the idea here is to have, as you say, a pot of money available to us so that we can get the work going and have that money available to us as the projects come online? Is that the reason for this? I mean, I, I am in favor of this. I'm very grateful that we're looking a little bit out of the box here to try to figure out a way to finance these projects with MSD, or rather get them going as quickly as possible. And so is that the reason that we're entering into this kind of situation with the banking instruments that you talked about?
It's an attempt to facilitate the ability to sign contracts without having to incur the dollars because you may sign a contract for a $100 million project, but you don't actually need cash to spend and construct, construct that project on date one. It may be a three or five-year project. So instead of generating $100 million today, we're creating or entering into these contracts for these facilities to have access for purposes of meeting legal requirements. I'd say we have access to $100 million, but we're not actually having to generate $100 million worth of cash when we sign the contract. But rather, we will through loan funding, or cash, or bond issuances, generate those dollars later on as actually needed for construction spend.
So will that have the effect of moving these projects along more quickly?
More cost-effectively.
And cost-effectively? But won't it allow us, because as you say, if we're entering into a contract for, I don't know, a project that's $50 million, we don't have $50 million accumulated yet, it allows us to move that project anyway because we've got this financing instrument?
The one thing, that, that's correct, that's correct.
Just, I don't want to misstate it, but it seems to me that this is a very smart and strategic approach to keep the projects going because we've got a whole new phase, you know, that we're entering into with the city of Cincinnati. And this allows us to get going on that and not to create delay waiting for the money to be sitting in the reserve, but rather get the projects going, and as the funds come in, they fund the projects.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just want to make sure I understood it correctly, thanks. Okay, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you. Thank you, Bethany, for the presentation. Just a question as it relates to the Bank of America is our line of credit facility. And of course, Piper Sandler is our standing note purchase contract. I was just wondering, it makes sense to me, why we didn't do both with Bank of America rather than having two entities? We don't want to put all our eggs in one basket? I would think it might be not as... Go ahead.
The facilities are different. So the Bank of America line of credit, you know, once we execute on that, if you need dollars tomorrow, they're going to facilitate a check for you to have dollars tomorrow. The standing note purchase agreement with Piper, which is, you will note, the fee for that particular facility is significantly lower. And that's because it is not a ready cash facility. In order to access cash through that facility, we'd actually have to go through the process of issuing, issuing notes. So that's a debt transaction. So there's a lot of upfront work, not a lot, it shouldn't take long, but there is some upfront work, there's some documentation, there's a process that you have to go for, go through at least 30 to 60 days to access the markets and to get dollars from that. So it's not, it's not ready cash, which is what really the Bank of America line of credit is designed to accomplish. But what it does do, because you have a commitment from an entity to, to issue debt, you do have, for purposes of meeting your legal requirements, access to dollars sufficient from a legal perspective to allow you to encumber funds, to sign projects, to facilitate project construction, as per Commissioner Treehouse's point. So those are different products, they're, they have different components to them. The Piper product, again, is not one we ever actually intend to have to facilitate. We don't expect to issue notes under that product. But what that product does do is give you a low-cost way to have additional capacity to encumber funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, so when we went through this process, I think we were initially thinking, hoping maybe there would be one product that solved the concern. And what we realized is that both of these products in tandem give what we need and meet sort of all the requirements of having access to ready cash, also having a significant amount of dollars, encumbrance capacity to a significant amount. And so this hybrid approach, I guess you could call it, we felt was the absolute best and most suitable solution for the county and the district to meet all of the needs that we've identified thus far in the financial plan development process.
Thank you.
Mr. Brugan, you wanted to add to that?
I was actually going to add almost exactly what Bethany just said, is we didn't go out looking for two solutions, but our, our underwriting team and our, and our debt team, when they saw the proposals that came in, you know, was flexible enough to realize that these two solutions were better than any one solution.
Thank you, that's all I had.
Thank you. Oh, I did, I did want to have one follow-up. On the, the two-part solution, it also, you have one with $100 million and another with $250 million. Is there anything, is that why, or?
Yeah, I don't know, John, if you want me to take that?
Go ahead, Bethany, sure.
Right, so the, the encumbrance needs and encumbrance capacity is definitely a larger number in terms of what we think we need versus the actual access to ready cash. So we were trying to be thoughtful as noted before, the Bank of America line of credit is more expensive. That is because they have to have cash available to you, you know, pretty much instantaneously. And so we're trying to minimize costs, but also making sure that we provide enough capacity to meet what we can foresee based upon the information that we have right now, your potential ready cash needs are versus your potential encumbrance capacity needs. And so that's what drove, drove the difference in size.
Okay, and then both have the initial term, you have on five years. Help me, can I understand that part? I mean, initial five years, but will there be a refinancing, or how do we?
So we put renewal language in the contract, and both firms have, we're still in the documentation process, but are amenable to providing renewal language. It's not automatic renewal language, but it's essentially, they would renew by committing to, you know, sending you a notification, I think it's 90 days before the facilities expire, and indicate the ability to renew, and the county has to affirmatively act, either saying, yes, we would like to renew, or not renew. So we anticipate that there will be the ability to renew this facility in five years. We didn't want to lock in automatic, automatic renewal language because this is the first time the county has undergone this. So we wanted to have, one, we wanted to have a long enough term to meet your needs, but at the same time, can maintain the county's autonomy. If this, if it doesn't work, or there's a better product that comes along five years from now, we have the ability to take advantage of it. And if it does work, then we have the ability to renew.
Gotcha, and five years is kind of the norm, that number.
Five years is, was, is a fairly good amount of time to have. And I think in the case of one, we actually had to ask for five because I think the initial proposal was three. Both firms have been very amenable to our asks and accommodating them.
Okay, great. Thank you, yes, Vice President.
Yeah, so I just, you know, and Bethany, you just said it, this is the first time we're doing this. And so I just do want to compliment you and the team, John and Jeff included, with, you know, looking at something with an eye towards flexibility so that we can get our biggest bang for the buck strategically. Have one amount here, one amount here. The more expensive item obviously has less, so it costs us less. So I just want to say that I'm really interested and excited about the, as excited as you get about MSD financing. I do think this is, it's a new look for us, and I'm really grateful that we're trying something different here. And again, my eye is always towards getting the projects funded and out the door to respond to the consent decree and the needs in the community. And so this allows us to do that. So I'm, I'm very grateful that you took a critical look at this and saw potential here with these two vehicles that we've not tried before. So thank you to all involved for putting this in front of us.
Thank you. I would, I just concur with that in terms of looking at creative financing. Bethany, you and your team, and Brugan, and our administrative team. I'm interested in getting the, I agree with being able to get these projects done, which a lot of people are working on, but I also am very concerned about the cost because we are at a time now where everything is going up. We're dealing with people right now with property taxes and are trying to hold on to their homes that they have. And I know we have been working diligently, we put some additional dollars, about $700,000, to try to help people sustain. But there are people who also are dealing with high gas and electric prices that have gone up now when you just look at the marketplace. And so people are dealing with that, and we want to try to keep these bills down. I mean, the sewer part of the bill, people are starting to say some things about. So definitely want, we have a balance, we got this mandate to do the right thing without the federal government giving us any money to do the right thing. And then, as was said, we're talking, you know, we're in the billions, not the millions. So I do also like the fact that you put a team together and put out a request for proposals so we could get their thoughts. And I think, you know, looking at this list of team people that are in this field, I think was, was a very good plan and idea. So I think we're moving in the right direction. Again, I'm going to always be on the side of making sure that cost is affordable because we want to make sure people be able to afford to still live in Hamilton County. So this is, I think, really good, and it shows the county trying to be creative and look at it from a lot of different areas. And then it was news to me that the state law require, so we got the federal government not putting in any money, then we've got the state on us, they're not putting in any money, and everybody's got a mandate on us. So, but to be able to look at, we got the state law, we got the federal mandate, and you were able to come back with a creative package. So I'm very interested in this, so thank you.
Commissioner Dumas, did you want to add anything?
Okay.
If I may just, you know, because you see Bethany and I today, I just want to give kudos to Joseph Schuster from MSD, who was also an integral part of this team and always the voice for the ratepayers as well.
Awesome, we're a great team. Mr. Aludo, did you want to add something?
John, maybe some next steps on this, I think, with the board?
All right, yes, we're briefing today because you will see the authorization for these instruments coming forward, I think by a leave on the 21st of March.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? No other questions? Okay, thank you very much, thank you so much, Bethany. We will, we will be talking with you very soon, thank you. Okay, if there's no further business, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Yes. Yes.